Good evening, everyone, and welcome to another meeting of the Inkster City Council. Today is Monday, November the 6th, 2023. The time is now 7:05 PM. Before we get off into roll call, please Reverend Williams.
Yeah.
Prayer, please. You definitely hear.
Father God, we come right down no other way but leaning on your everlasting love. Father, we just thank you for life, health, and strength as we conduct the business of the city of Inkster. Bind us together with love and unity. Father, if we can move this city forward, let us come together with one mind and one thought to move forward. In Jesus' name, we pray, amen.
Amen.
Roll call, I'm sorry, pledge allegiance to the flag, please, all stand. Trying to get out of here, I'm doing too fast. All right, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Williams.
Here, open the window. Turn on your audio, please, don't miss her. Okay. We'll wait, okay, go ahead.
Councilmember Chisholm.
Present.
Mayor Protim Howard.
Here.
Councilmember Shaw.
Yeah.
Councilmember Watley.
Present.
Councilmember Washington has an excused absence. And for the record, Mayor Wimberly.
Here. All right, we have a quorum, moving right into already closed session, approval of the agenda. So move, Mr. Chair. There, yep, there's second.
Second.
So for discussion, under new business, those items will be moved until the next meeting on November the 20th. All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have emotion carries, moving into presentations. Reverend Williams, you have a presentation for tonight?
Yes.
All right.
You want to do it?
No, you go, Mr. Chair. It's your presentation. Yep.
I'd like to call Mr. Ned Sanders up. Hey, I would like to. I would like to present this to you for 25 years that you served as one of the board review. I know a lot of people think that, but thank the Lord, but people have to always remember that we need board review or mayor that won't take all our tax money.
Excuse me.
Only half of America, and the council, you're like, as many as I have, certainly.
All right.
I just want, want people to know how excellent that you've worked as one examiner of board review.
So we're going to get 25 more years out of here.
Right.
Matter of fact, let's go this way here. Had a county behind us. Come on over here. Councilmember, can you please say a prayer, please? Just kind of straighten your, uh.
Yeah.
Councilman, of course, he's a photographer, too.
All right.
You have words? So take the vote here, please.
I want to thank the mayor and the council for this award. I like to say 25 went by real fast, but I knew.
Can you speak into the mic, sir?
I'm sorry.
So everybody can hear you.
Okay, um, so with this award, I still need to ask the question that people ask me all the time. Why don't anybody come to the board review? And so we get revenue from the winter and summer tax bills. We need that revenue to pay the bills that you guys have to deal with, but you don't need all the money. And so I'm here today to talk about the procedure, the process. For example, and I'll give you, I brought it with me, it's the application for property hardship. And this came about because of, not you guys, but the state, okay? And to qualify, you have to have a certain amount of income. And people are not getting the right information when they call the city assessor. In other words, I have one of my counterparts, Peggy here, and she can verify that nobody's, we spent four hours in a meeting, nobody shows up. Lack of knowledge of what's going on, that's why I'm here representing the citizens of Inkster. You don't know me because you don't see me. You need to come to the board review. And in order to do that, go down right back here to water bill, border department, and get an application. It goes by income. I'm going, I'm giving you a quick example, I don't want to spend too much time on this, but if there's two in the family, and your income, you're 1099, it's 18,000 dollars. And I know someone has a grandmother or someone that is not making a lot of money. And that's, I'll give you a quick example, if your taxes, some tax bill is a thousand dollars, half off. Half off. Half off, that's right, five hundred dollars, you only had to pay half. And a lot of you probably don't even know anything about this application, right? No, you don't. It's not, it's just the way it is. They need to pay bills here, and so I'm not blaming anybody, but I'm here, I'm here to, let's talk about after tomorrow, the process, the procedure of getting this information out to the citizens of Inkster.
Yes, sir.
And my, my final thing is this. I came, I came before you before, and I donated over a hundred tennis balls I got from the club. And we have to get the tennis courts fixed. They say that no one plays tennis, no one's plays racquetball. Well, because we, we don't have anybody to teach them. Donate those tennis rackets you got in your closet in the basement. Unless, when, when the courts get fixed, I leave for somebody to join me. I live across the street from the tennis courts. I spent 30 years cleaning them courts up, putting the nets up, and nobody's even coming out to the play. But if we, as a people, can bring these kids out and teach them tennis, racquetball, soccer, something, they will come. Listen, bless you with love and peace.
Bless you.
One last thing, because of what we're going through, there's a message I'd like to leave with you. It comes from 2 Chronicles, chapter 7, verse 14. It said, "If my people who are called by name shall hum themselves and pray and seek my face and turn from your wicked ways, then you will hear from heaven, and he will forgive us our sins and heal the land." We need to heal in Inkster. Bless you and peace.
Outstanding, all right, moving right into the consent agenda.
So.
There's second, properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hear none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
Ayes have emotion carries. Boards and commissions? None. Previous business, none. New business, none. Public.
Can I just take a step back and make sure that because that stuff was on the consent agenda, it's still part of the record?
Correct, go ahead.
Okay, that's all, I'm just making sure that the replication and the authority and everything.
Yes, ma'am.
Because I didn't say anything, and I don't want any mess ups.
No, you don't, yeah, we're, we're going to take care of it.
All right.
Me and the clerk is actually, we know tomorrow's election day, and that's her main focus. So when we were just talking, as it relates to how the steps should go, it'll probably be like Wednesday.
Okay.
Okay.
Not a problem, just as long as it gets done.
Yes, ma'am. All right, then, moving right along, this brings us to public comment. If you want to address this body, we typically ask that you fill out a form. It's located over on the table, looked like we ran out of forms for tonight. People were actually sending in little notes, so I do have you, so please forgive me if you're out of order as it relates to how they came in, but we're going to make sure we get your call. You have three minutes, and we will have the clock on tonight, all right? Elizabeth Anderson. State your name for the record, too, please.
My name is Elizabeth Anderson, and I'd like to know what you guys plan to do about the water situation in Inkster. We have lead in our water. When's the last time EPA been in here to check it? I'm tired of paying these high water bills, but I spent a hundred dollars because I can't drink the water. Duane County came out and passed out filters. Why aren't y'all checking these poor babies for lead?
Okay.
You know, that's my issue, and as far as what's going on with the city, I, it's a shame, but like he said, always going to take a lot of prayer to speak what's going on, and see, I've dealt with you personally, and I know you're not a man of your word.
All right, okay, understanding that, can you speak to what she's talking about as it relates to the lead service? Just so we can clear that up, because that's an egregious allegation.
So. Says 2019, the city of Inkster.
The speakers woke up very loud and.
Maybe you should go to the podium, yeah, go to the podium, so people can hear.
Speak up on that.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, you are orders.
Speaking to the mic.
For the record, I'm Jerome Bivens, Department of Public Works Director. Says 2019, we have been addressing the lead service in the city of Inkster. We have done over 259 houses so far, were replacing lead service, another 50 or 60 in our construction area. So I don't understand what the young lady was stating, but if she has an issue, she has a number to my office, which is 313-563-9774. I am the DPW director. I am the DPW director. Right, so we are in, excuse me, we are in compliance with the state of Michigan Eagle because they do check up on me because I'm regulated and regulatory. So we do not have this lead issue that people keep claiming we do, you know? We are doing what we're supposed to do in the city of Inkster, as we come upon a lead service on our projects, we replace them. But we did an abatement, when we failed, we took care of that, we addressed it, this council is well aware of that. When we failed the second time, we did the abatement, we addressed it, we passed out filters. I did a public notice, we was on the media, I did everything I was supposed to do in accordance with the state. So like I said, once again, my office number is 313-563-9774. You welcome to come visit me at any time, and we'll come out to your house and test your water since you feel you have lead in your service. Thank you.
Barbara Cooper? Barbara Cooper? State your name for the record, please, Ms.?
Barbara Cooper, President of the Inkster Goodfellas.
All right.
Mayor, Council, residents of the city of Inkster. This is the last week for the ads for our paper, so I need for everybody that's going to put an ad in, would you please give it to me by Friday? And if you aren't coming back, Reverend Williams, just put one in to say, thank you, the city of Inkster. Ms. Watley, thank you. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to the citizens of Inkster. I just think everybody up here can put an ad in, in our paper to help our kids. No child without a Christmas. That's everybody, everybody. Our paper drive is going to be, right now is December the 1st and December the 2nd. And I have to get with the police chief and the fire chief, but I think those are the two dates we're going to do. We were talking about an extra weekend, and we haven't locked that down, but they both are in agreement for the first and the second right now, so.
He was out. You're about to say DPW.
And the DPW, the first and the second, okay? And then if anybody else want a weekend, that next weekend, you can have that weekend, too. I'm getting signs made that says Inkster Goodfellas Paper Drive is today. And it's going to be on all the corners, so everybody will know that this is our paper drive day. And don't have to call me to see what's going on, that's going to be our day, and we're going to be out there. And I just appreciate everything that everyone did for the pancake breakfast. We had a good time, that was a good breakfast. And I just appreciate all the support from the community, and I just ask that you just continue to support the Inkster Goodfellas, because we trying to make sure we service every child in the city of Inkster from the Goodfellas. Thank you all so much.
John Hearn Jr.? Please state your name for the record, please.
I'm Pastor John Hearn Jr., and I, well, first and foremost, I want to thank council for this opportunity, and Mr. Mayor, to stand before you. I'm standing here regarding a meeting to, the two sessions before this particular one, where I was granted an extension for the purchase of the Annapolis Point property. And I was given a 90-day extension and was told to meet the following week with the city's economic development director to iron out the details. Well, it took, it took two weeks for the information to even come back to us for the amendment to the purchase agreement. And when it came back to us, it had an addendum for it with the removal of the tax abatement on the purchase of the property until the houses were sold. In addition, a $24,000 commission for the city's realtor was added to the agreement. Now, the extension was granted based on what was in the original agreement, just to give us an extra 90 days, and you asked us to put down a security deposit. The date was given last week, Wednesday, for us to come in and do that. We came, Mr. Mayor, you were not here to sign the agreement. Mr. Daudell was here, the city's realtor was not here, he told us to come back the next day. You were not here, city's realtor was not here to sign the agreement. Today, I get an email from your realtor telling me that my purchase agreement is totally off the table now, and my interest in the property has been terminated because of my lack of progress. Now, I want to address this to you tonight because this is not a fair transaction to be taking place, especially when you agreed to give me the extension in the first place.
You want to tell the council that you asked for us to sign the document first so you could go and get your deposit before you had the money to pay for the property?
And you gave us three days from Wednesday, from that Wednesday, to bring it.
So let's make sure that we're clear, and again, this is all on public record.
Yes, it is.
This is all on public record. You stood before this body, and you said that you had the money to pay for the property at $400,000. The city's property is sold as is. When we decided to give you an extension, this body decided to give you an extension based off of the purchase agreement that you signed. You came in, I was actually here when you came in, actually both times I was here. So what the economic development director told me at that time was that you didn't have a check with you, that you wanted me to sign the city's property over to you, so then in turn, you could take it and get the money.
That's misinformation, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Because all we want is the purchase agreement.
Our, our realtor is here in the audience, Mrs. Burgess is right here, and we both on the same page.
Not ask for you to sign the property over, we just need the extension of the purchase agreement.
The extension to do what, did you have the check?
Yes.
Okay, you had a check tonight? Okay, so that's, that's what I'm talking about, yeah. Come and show us the check, you got the check, what are we talking, it ain't nothing really to talk about because here's the city realtor right here.
We have something to talk about because I got this letter right here.
Okay, come on, bring, come on now, Curtis, stand.
My failure to close within a reasonable time, failure to meet other conditions and deadlines as defined by the purchase.
I mean, you wanted to bring, you wanted to bring it out to everybody, we could talk about it.
Yes.
Let's, let's talk about it.
But where were, where were you?
I mean, let's talk about it, I was here.
Because we were told to be here Wednesday.
Yeah, did you have the check?
Tuesday and Wednesday.
You had the check? I'm sorry, did you have the check, that's the question?
No, the question.
Wait, wait, wait.
Did you have the check, if we're talking about.
Instructions in your email clearly stated that the extension would be signed, and you had.
Extension for what, to do what?
Three days to submit the earnest money deposit, or the contract would be null and void.
Okay.
So when we showed up, we showed up based on those instructions.
Okay.
And at the end of the day, if we can just sign the document, then the check will be submitted. If we don't submit it within three days, then it's null and void.
Okay.
But we can't get to the point where we can get a contract even signed.
Okay.
And that's the, that's the factor that we're at right now.
So you want us to sign some property?
You're signing for an extension. And the, the document.
Extension of what?
That you're, you're signing for an extension of the purchase agreement for three months as city council voted. You're also signing that there's a $40,000 earnest money deposit that the city council voted.
Right, so.
We also added to that, that once the document is signed, that within three days, we have to submit that deposit.
Who, who added that to that? We didn't add that to that, this council body.
It's in the email, I've got copies printed out, it's not, it's not an issue at all.
Please, Curtis.
The only issue is that the document has not been signed.
Okay.
And we came Tuesday to sign it, and also Wednesday to sign it. So the question is, can we get the document signed?
If you have a check.
Can we meet tomorrow?
Yes, I have no problem with that, if you have a check.
Because we set an appointment for Tuesday and for Wednesday.
Okay.
I left you a message.
Okay.
If you're available to meet, and you're going to be here, then I can show up with the check, and we can all sign the document.
Yeah, if you have the check, you didn't have the check with you when you came to meet with me.
I understand, it's, that's not what you instructed us.
I didn't instruct you.
Changing the instructions, and it's okay.
Mr. Daudell is right here in the back, he can talk and explain that to you as well.
And I can show you a printed copy of where it states that.
Okay.
The city council has a copy of the.
I don't have a problem with, I don't have a problem with helping you all, because I've been helping you from the beginning.
What time would you like to meet tomorrow?
So I'm available to meet first thing in the morning. We can meet first thing in the morning, yeah.
And us to meet and sign.
We can meet first thing in the morning at 9:00 AM here. Today, I don't care about elections being tomorrow, I'll be here to handle the city's business. Bring a cashier's check tomorrow, and we'll sign the paperwork.
Okay.
So you can get your property.
Thank you, have a good night.
All right, there we go, all right, you want to add something to that?
Instructions.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you want to add something to that? This is the city realtor, by the way, I'm sorry.
To realtor is what our realtor creed appreciates and respects. She has decided that she doesn't need to talk to the city realtor. She, I sent her an email, which asked her to address all issues through me.
Correct.
And I would take them to my mayor.
That's right.
And she has negated that, and on every turn, they have not shown up with any money. No money, no deal. You don't get a purchase agreement signed, that purchase agreement is legally a receipt saying that you have received $40,000.
Correct.
So if you sign it, you've just signed away the property, and it will go as though the, your signature is a receipt saying that $40,000 has been received by the city of Inkster.
Correct.
And it's like all these little hoops we've jumped through have been frivolous and appear to be, let's wait until after the election, the extension. No other developer on none of the properties was, that were sold, sold in Inkster. Not one other developer drug a process out this long. This pro, for 30 days, it says 30 days.
Yeah, I mean, I've been very supportive, I've given them two, what, two letters, I've given you guys? Letters of support to go and get monies? So you can't act like, you know, I'm not trying to meet with you and get you, you stood before this body and said you had the money. So now if you got to go out and find the money, that's kind of egregious.
Until you get a receipt.
Correct.
Saying that you have $40,000.
That's right.
There is no reason to meet.
A cashier's check.
A cashier's check.
Correct.
For $40,000, at that point, at the point that I give you a receipt, then sign the document.
Well, I'm not doing nothing without you telling me to do it, as the city realtor, so let's move forward then. But we'll be here tomorrow at 9:00 AM to take care of the city's business. Yes. Octavia Smith? Oh, and Peggy Bishop.
Hey, good evening, Mayor, Council, residents.
Evening.
Octavia and Ms. Peggy here tonight, of course. As you all know, the Inkster Chamber of Cal, Inkster Chamber of Commerce calendar will be ending on Monday, November the 13th, so you still have until Monday to place your ad in Inkster Chamber of Calendar. So you can contact us at 313-300-1057, or just go straight online to the Inkster Chamber of Commerce website, that's inksterchamber.com. You want to have something to say, Ms. Peggy?
No, you just want to ask.
And also, I just wanted to also, I don't know the updates at Western Wayne Family Health Center right now, you know, they're going through construction, so that they didn't have an area to do the yoga and the zumba and things like that. But at Oak Street Health, for those young people who are 65 and over, we do have dance classes on Tuesdays at 10 o'clock AM. And we also have cheer exercise, which is cheer aerobics, on Mondays and Wednesdays at 10 o'clock AM. So you're welcome to come there to still get your physical activity in. So I still can see y'all, if not at Western Wayne, I can see y'all at Oak Street Health. And that is at 27155 Cherry Hill in Inkster. Anything else, Ms. Peggy?
I think.
Okay, so we hope to see you guys soon, thank you.
Questions from council?
Questions, I'm sorry.
Has the pharmacy been, is it, they working on the pharmacy?
They are working on the pharmacy at Western Wayne Family Health Center, so I haven't been in the last week or so, so I'm not sure how far they got, but I know that everything is closed down for construction.
Okay.
As far as the gym, you know, the community center.
That'd be great, that'd be great.
Today is very nice, they updated and did some improvements inside the building, it's very nice.
Thank you, thank you for your services.
Really nice, thank you so very much, thank you. Shirley Hankerson? Please state your name for the record, ma'am.
No problem.
Thank you.
Good evening, Councilman Mayor, Shirley Hankerson.
Evening.
And I just want to say how disappointing you have been. That's the number one thing I wanted to say to you. First thing is, you know, you were the first person in Inkster to have a dispensary in our city, all right? I testify for you as a councilperson. Byron was your, your, your attorney, all right? And you messed around and let that get away from you? And then you sold us out to every person that wanted a dispensary that had money, that could afford it, and left all your cousins and your friends out of the loop, okay? That is not untrue, okay? The only person that has one besides that is Mark, and he's in partnership with somebody, all right? So I don't have to lie, all right? Because I've been sitting here long before you became mayor, all right? Just about every council meeting, okay? Okay? And that's all I got to say.
All right, order, 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 everybody has a right to say what they want to say, and understand this, everybody's not going to like you, it's okay, but we not, well, listen, point of, point of order. Point, point of order, thank you, point of order. No, 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 not tonight, all right? Next, please, Melvin Gatewood. Sorry, Mr. Melvin, you had to come behind that, God's hands. Come on up. Come on, come on, come on, give me some good news.
Mr. Mayor, amen, council.
We are still in session. We're still in session, please. So, we need to get settled a little bit. Let's do that while we're still in session. Go ahead, Mr. Gatewood.
And we put in all the paperwork and proposal for the building and on John Daly for a free store.
Okay.
And we are asking the council to approve the cost that we put forth, which was seven thousand dollars.
Okay.
And we're asking for an approval on that so that we can move forward and do what needs to be done as far as fixing up the building and preparing it so that we can be a blessing to the city of Inkster and its residents. Say, man, again, we say again, everything that we have is free. We get every, all the clothing, everything that people donate to us, we give away free. We don't sell anything, and so we're looking to get the building at a cost out of our own personal pockets that we can afford to be able to renovate the building and prepare it so that the public can enjoy what we are doing.
Okay. And so we have. Already, are you working with, who are you working with? Stephanie?
Yes, we submitted all the paperwork.
Stephanie?
Yeah.
Peggy? Working with Peggy? Okay, good. Okay, so we'll try to get that forth. Let's try to get that forth next council meeting that'll come before us. We know that the building is actually valued a little bit higher than that, for sure. At the same time, we, you know, definitely because of the proposal will come through the realtor, at that time, we'll hear your presentation, and the council can say whether they'll accept your offer, okay?
All right. Thank you very much.
Well, we're looking forward to it. I'm excited about you guys moving along. All right.
Thank you very much.
All right. Walter Cooper? Walter Cooper? Come on, Walter.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm Director Walter Cooper at the Inkster Police Department. I do have some good news tonight. Last weekend, the weekend before last, we had our medicine takeback day with AKAs at the library. We were able to accept sixty-five point five pounds of unused expired and wanted medication, and it was turned over to the DEA. So, I want to thank the city of Inkster for the medicine. Also, I want to thank the city for a wonderful trunk or treat that we had at the rec center. It was a lot of kids, a lot of family. We had lots of fun. We even ran out of food and candy, so that's how you know it was good. So, thank you, city of Inkster. This Thursday is our Coffee with the Cop. It is being sponsored by Oak Street Health or Inkster Road. They will be sponsoring complimentary coffee and donuts, so you can come out and speak to our Inkster Police Chief, William Ratliff, our Assistant Police Chief, Tamika Jenkins, as well as our Housing Officer, Officer Hall, and as well as our ordinance officers and our new animal control officer as well. So, if you want to speak to any of the officers, you have any ordinance complaints, animal complaints, make sure you come to the Coffee with the Cop. That is this Thursday, December, I'm sorry, November the ninth, from eleven to one at Oak Street Health or at Inkster Road.
Awesome.
Lastly, this is called our Senior Crime Prevention Summit. We'll be having that next Wednesday, November the fifteenth. That will be at the rec center from six PM to eight PM. We're gonna be talking about helpful tips for our seniors like scam prevention, neighborhood watch programs, and emergency preparedness. And if anybody here that wants to start a neighborhood watch group, please make sure you come out to the Senior Crime Prevention Summit so we can get some neighborhood watch groups going on back in the city of Inkster.
Awesome. Thank you, Walter. Keep up the good work. All right. City Clerk?
Well, everybody knows there's an election tomorrow. The polls are open from seven AM to eight PM. Please encourage your neighbors, your families, your friends to exercise their right to vote tomorrow for your local government, mayor, city council, library board. And for those of you that live in the Westwood Community School District, there's a bond proposal on the ballot. So, I look forward to seeing you all tomorrow.
All right.
And, yeah, yes, yes, yes. I think I should be able to say something, you know? You know, I know.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'm Gabe Henderson. Hello, fam. How y'all doing? I love you all. Okay, I'm Gabe Henderson. I'm with the Inkster Goodfellow Organization, okay? Starting this week, we're gonna be having some drop-off boxes. City Hall, Fire Department, the Police Department, okay? For toys. You know, Toys R' Tots organization, they got funny, you know? And they don't give us toys like they used to. So, when you come to pay your bills, bring a toy for our kids. You know, we give the gift certificates and so forth, but bring a toy, okay? And thank you for letting me say something. And God bless you.
Hey, look, I was surprised your name wasn't on, I didn't get your paper. I was surprised your name wasn't on. Too long, too long, too long. It's not too long, Mr. Henderson. Please, please. All right. Sorry, sir. Forgive me, sir. I'm just trying to keep moving. All right. All right, going back to, no, no. Anything? Anything? I do have to bring this out, though, because especially with everybody in here, what you guys are doing over in Inkster Housing with Officer Hall. Real quick, just real quick, talk about crime reduction over there. What's going on? Real quick, because he's doing a fantastic, just stand up, Officer Hall. Go ahead, just real quick. What's happening over there?
So, over the last thirty days, well, actually forty-five days now, the last thirty days, crime is down fifty percent. Those numbers are not an accident. We have strategically worked with housing. Housing has helped us tremendously, and they've worked closely with Officer Hall on camera placement, community events in housing, reaching out. The people who live in housing have been phenomenal, phenomenal.
Yes.
They understand that we can't do it without them, and they are, they're coming to the table and working with us, and they're the ones that really deserve all the applause because before, we had a really hard time getting people to get engaged. And now, once they realize we're serious about it, they're getting engaged, and I appreciate it.
Thanks, Chief. Thank you, Chief. That comes with leadership, too, though, Chief. So, thank you for everything that you're doing over there. All right. Councilwoman Wiley? One more time. November the twentieth, just one more time. All right. Councilor Shaw?
You know, Mr. Chair, I know tomorrow.
Turn that mic on.
Yes, sir, for you. I know tomorrow is Election Day, and I just want to say what our great Martin Luther King Jr., Dr. King said in a speech in nineteen fifty-seven, where he was advocating for voting rights. And one thing he said in his speech, he says, "Give us the ballot." And he said in part of his speech, and I quote, "Give us the ballot, and we will fill our legislative halls with men of goodwill." So, I just want to encourage everyone here, as you go to the halls, the voting halls, on tomorrow, I want you to speak as Dr. Martin Luther King says, "Give us the ballot." That's all.
And we have one more meeting, one more meeting. Go ahead.
I'd just like to state to people of this community who supported the passing of my sister, and I was just grateful to each and every last one of you who just stopped and gave a phone call, card, or whatever, supported us, okay? My family needed that, so I just want to say on behalf of my sister, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for all your support, council, and thank you.
Yes, sir. We love you, and we love her. All right. Councilman Chilton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nothing at this time.
All right. Mayor Protomal? All right. Call for German? All the favorite singer, Poppin' Zaynai?
Aye.
Any nay can stay. All right. Let's go.
Are you sure?
One more. One more.